It's called order the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Pasadena City College for February 2nd, 2011. Roll call, please, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson.
I am here.
Mr. Baum, Mr. Martin, Ms. Brown, Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Dr. Mann.
Present.
Ms. Wa.
Present.
Mr. Peck.
Here.
Is there anyone to address the board with respect to any of the closed session items on our agenda? Those matters are employee discipline dismissal release, one employee, collective bargaining, PCCFA, CSEA 777, ISSU, POA, negotiator is Mr. Ingledinger. I should have said the first item was government code 54957. The second item is government code 54957.6, also 54957.6, negotiation with unrepresented employees, confidential management association. Again, Mr. Ingledinger is our negotiator. If there is nobody here to address this on closed session items, we will move into Okay, the Board of Trustees is back in session. There is no reportable action from our closed session matters. And so let us now prepare Ms. Wa. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 19th, 2011. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And moved and seconded, we approve the minutes. Anyone spot something that they need to have corrected? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay. We now get to introductions, announcements. Dr. Rocha, any announcements or introductions?
President Thompson, it just so happens that I do have an announcement today. And I will read from something that Juan and staff prepared. The Pasadena area community college district Board of Trustees and Superintendent President are pleased to announce the following action by the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges: reaffirmation of accreditation for Pasadena City College. Just in announcing that, I did want to reiterate my message from this morning to, first of all, I want to thank the trustees and the members for their support throughout the process that made it possible for the staff to pull this together, broaden the participation, and respond affirmatively to all the recommendations that the commission made. And I want to especially thank all of the staff, everyone who is here, the team that was led by Bob Miller and Crystal Colross, but everyone that is here at the resource table, Dave, Ed, Leadership in the Senate, Denise, and Jamie, the students, all the members of the executive committee, and many of the faculty and staff that are out there. This was truly an all-college effort. Really grateful, and I'm very, very proud of the team that made this accomplishment possible. But I also should say, I'm not surprised, because I've seen the way this team works. I've seen the kind of quality work that they do, and I wasn't taking it for granted. But I was quite confident that the work that they were doing would result in this great accomplishment. So, at appropriate time when the semester gets started, we'll have, I don't know, it's winter, so we might not have an ice cream social, but we'll have some kind of celebration so that we can frame the accreditation certificate and hang it on the wall. Thank you, President Thompson.
Well, thank you very much, and also thank you very, very much to the people who were identified, Crystal, Bob, Dave, Ed, Denise, Jamie, et cetera, et cetera, and everybody who really pitched in. This was a team effort, and that's exactly what was required, and that's what we had. And the result we had is fabulous, certainly well deserved. It's nice to have it be official. So, thanks to all of you for really an excellent job. Other introductions or announcements? My goodness, this is unusually quiet board this evening. I'm shocked. There is one announcement I will make that isn't quite as important as the one that Dr. Rocha just made, but for those of us who are up in Pennsylvania, this is a very important day. And you might have noticed that Punxsutawney Phil came out today, and he did not see his shadow. So, that means spring is on its way.
People in Pennsylvania, and Michigan, and Illinois, and Ohio may not agree with that
right now, but also significantly, in this little article, it said that Punxsutawney Phil was not willing to go out on a limb to forecast whether the Pittsburgh Steelers will win the Super Bowl this Sunday. He backed away on that important task, but anyway, go Steelers. Okay. Public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody have anything they would like to address the board about? Okay. Reports and recognitions, Board of Trustees, CCLC Legislative Conference, Dr. Mann?
Yes, I have given written reports in the board members' packets, and I think there's some extras for the public. And I want to, the Effective Trustee Workshop and the Legislative Conference was held January 21st to the 24th, and what I think is, several things that were very important. First of all, there was record attendance. Forty-eight out of 54 of the newly elected or appointed trustees attended, which is very unusual, and there was a 60% increase in attendance at the Legislative Conference. Now, part of that was because the attendance last year was terrible because of budget considerations, but it was 15% higher than the overall average of five years. So, the addition of student success to it made a, I think, made a real difference. There were some excellent presentations, most of which are focused on student success. And I put this on here, you can go to the league's website and click on the conference, and most of these presentations, the PowerPoints, and in some instances, the videos are available. So, if anyone wants to look at those. There, I also attended, well, I had three board meetings, the Executive Committee of the Triple CT, the Triple CT Board, and the California Community College League Board. And on this sheet, I've mentioned some things that happened. One thing is, I was elected president of the California Community College League and was nominated to be president of the California Community Colleges trustees. And it's very complicated, but what I finally figured out is the California Community College trustees, and there's an association of CEOs, together form the league. And so, the presidents of each of those rotate serving as president of the league. So, I, the election for the president for the Triple CT will be on May 1st, and I've been nominated, if I'm elected, I'll be the second person from PCC to have been elected. Dick Green was president in 1978, but no one has ever been league president before. So, what I found out is a great deal of work, there was suddenly three or four more other committees in Sacramento I'm supposed to attend, that no one had bothered to tell me until I keep getting the meeting announcements, including the chancellor's consultation council.
Well, congratulations to you, well-deserved honors that you are receiving and will receive. But just think of all those frequent flyer miles on Northwestern Airlines you're going to get. So, any other reports by members of the Board of Trustees? Mr. Peck?
I had a busy week last week in terms of meetings. Wednesday, the 26th, was the college council meeting, which we'll receive an update on, I think, later in this meeting. There was an interesting discussion that happened there. I attended the Measure Peace Citizens Oversight Committee that same evening where we, you were also there, trustee Thompson, the wonderful Emergency Operations Center, which is truly commendable and state-of-the-art. I was very impressed with the technology and so forth that's in that center, and it's a wonderful resource for PCC and the community to have. Also, the budget, I attended the first Budget and Resource Allocation Committee meeting under the new shared governance structure on Friday. It was primarily goal-setting, brainstorming, and identification of goals and priorities. Definitely an interesting experience. And as all of you know, the board retreat was this weekend, which I was very thankful to be a part of. And that's all for reports for right now.
Good. Dr. Fellow?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Wa?
Nothing.
Ms. Brown?
Nothing.
Dr. Mann?
I'm done with mine.
Mr. Martin? Just, I'm sure that Dr. Rocha will say something about the retreat also, but the board did have its, have a retreat this past Saturday, and engaged in some very, I thought, thoughtful and good discussions with respect to the budget woes that the state of California is facing, and in turn, community colleges and PCC are going to be facing as well, and also some of our goals and things that we want to do to address and to improve student success. So, we'll be talking a bit about some of that as we go into some of the agenda items for this evening, but any other else, Dr. Rocha?
Just moving on, Superintendent President, Ujima? Yes. Members of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to bring forward to the podium our great students from Ujima and their advisor, Professor Kiara Hensley. We should, couple of words of introduction, I used Kiara's married name, she was recently married, and so we congratulate Kiara and on her. But, of course, today, trustees is, we are now in Black History Month, and I wanted to bring Ujima and Kiara forward to have a brief report to talk about the work that she and Ujima does in terms of making sure that this meets one of our key student success outcomes in our educational master plan. You'll see on the agenda today, an item to send these good people to Philadelphia to represent, represent the college at an important conference during Black History Month. So, with that, I have the great privilege of introducing Kiara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I just want to say thank you. I'm going to actually let the students speak, because you hear from me, you see me around, you sort of know what I do, because I advertise. I just want to impress upon you the importance of the attendance at the Dream Deferred African-American, the African-American Dream Deferred Conference. That is the leading conference in the country, facing and discussing the issues around African-American education. We have, for the past five years, submitted a proposal and presented at that conference. So, I want to assure you that we are leaders, that PCC is a leader in instruction and programming around issues for African-American students. I will continue to do that work and take any guidance from you in how you want to move that forward. The EMP is a powerful thing, and I want to say thank you for publicly committing to assisting Latino students, African-American students, learning-disabled students, I mean, the most underrepresented students that need our services. It's a big deal to say it out loud, especially in time when there's no money, because we're the easiest guys to cut. So, that being said, I'm going to give you the group of students who are all, now, we have 35 of us, but these are the ones who are selected to go on the trip. And I want you to just hear from them very briefly. So, I will step aside and let them do their thing.
Hello, my name is Evan Sussman. I would like to say, when I first came out of high school, I didn't know what I wanted to do with my life. I was just another kid that was just out there, didn't know any potential, had potential, didn't know what to do. Through Ujima, and Professor Thomas, and all the guidance of Professor Pinya, I have learned that I can harness my potential, become the best person that I can be, and be academically competitive. I want to be a psychologist, I want to help people out, and I've learned that through Ujima. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Mark Rocha, for supporting Ujima, thank you, board, for supporting Ujima, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jordan. On behalf of the Ujima program, we would like to extend our gratitude for all that you have done for our program. Because of your faith and gracious generosity, we have been granted the opportunity to fly to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to attend the Dream Deferred Conference. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for which you have all made possible. The Ujima program has been the saving grace for many students that did not believe that college was the path for them. However, with your continuous support of the Ujima program, we have excelled way beyond the degree to which people thought we could. By providing us with the funding to pursue our education, we are able to encourage others to pursue their own. We are avid volunteers in our community, because we believe that only by teaching and mentoring others will we have reached our full potential and served. We will continue to express our appreciation verbally, as well as through our academic success. We thank you for our gracious gift, as well as the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Lewis. The Ujima program from one, from first day has been my family. Ms. Thomas and Allison have been there for me when I was scared, confused, and needed advice. This program has opened up so many doors for me. Through this program, I have learned skills that I can better my chances for being a successful college, college student. The activities that we have done outside this classroom have given me great experience that I can be proud of. Through this program, I have had the chance to make great friends who I can call whenever I'm in need. I have seen the maturity not in myself, but in everybody here. Through, oh, sorry. I am not the same student that I was last year. I know that the knowledge and experience that I have gained through Ujima can help me, not just in life, but in school and, well, school and life. Thank you. And to Dr. Rocha and all the board, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Sharia Evans, and I have to, I must say that Ujima has helped me so much. I, my, for my first year of college, I can't imagine going through my first year of college without Ujima, it would have been a total different experience. I know I would have had learned a lot, but not the same way that Ujima has helped me learn personally, and for education-wise, and also for my career and as well. Having a group of students with me during my whole first year of college has helped so much to see, to not only see myself struggle, but to also see all my other friends struggle through the same problems, and even more, and because I am part of the DSPS students, and naturally, I struggle more than the average student, but having this group with me has made me not feel so, not normal, but it's made me feel like it's okay to struggle, and it's okay to make mistakes, and it's helped me learn a lot. And I feel, I'm so happy and thrilled to be going to Philadelphia, and I feel like I deserve it, because I've worked so hard this whole semester, fall semester, winter semester, it's been a long journey, and there's no way I could have got this far without Ujima. And I must thank the president and all the board for supporting all of us.
Hello, my name is Lou Ray Guston, and I just wanted to start off by thanking you guys for all your support with Ujima. I was a troubled student in high school, my first three years, and when I entered my senior year, by the time I graduated, I ended up with a 3.2 for my senior year, and only had a 2.1 for my other three years. And I kept trying to figure out why my transfer from schools was so great for me, and why it was such a great experience. And I found out it was because I had the support and networking from teachers and stuff, and I felt like, once I graduated from high school, that was going to be gone. And once I entered PCC, and I joined the Ujima program, Ms. Thomas and the rest of the staff in Ujima helped me realize that it's not about everybody else helping me, it's about me figuring out what I need to do, and making my own path, and joining with other people to make college a better experience for me. So, that was the first thing. The second thing I want to thank you guys for is giving me the opportunity to go to Philadelphia this year. I know it's not easy right now, the economy is not the best right now, so funding is very limited, so I just want to thank you guys for that.
Sorry. Good evening, President Rocha, good evening, board members. My name is Alan Palmer, and I came here to talk about the Ujima program and how supportive it has been for me. Growing up throughout life, you were told that, for my race, and Latinos, and other races, that we're not, we're not given the opportunity to succeed through our colleges, like, we're, we're like below, basically below standards. But coming into PCC, I've given, I've been given the opportunity to receive an education thanks to the Ujima program. Our director has been like a mother to me, and the whole program has been a family. I want to talk about how it has been, like, Ujima has shown the importance of responsibility throughout college life and work for me. Also, for being a great support system, such as providing us with counseling, mentors, and giving us a chance to volunteer work, because if it wasn't for Ujima, I'd probably be at home watching TV doing nothing. So, thank you. Thank you, Professor Thomas. And I just want to thank you, President Rocha, and to the rest of the board members, giving African-American students the opportunity to experience the possibilities our nation has to offer us by giving us a chance to attend the Dream Deferred Conference in Philadelphia. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Victor Kelly Dacobo, and I'm a proud member of the Ujima program. Today, I would like to explain a couple points about the importance of counselors, not only in my program, but the entirety of the school. Counselors can hammer in the idea of time management. From my personal experiences, having a counselor has provided guidance in my academic career. By counselors such as Professor Thomas and Mr. Bloodgood stressing the idea of keeping focus on my dreams and career, it has encouraged me to not only continue my education, but pursue my own personal dreams and goals of becoming a lawyer. By frequently talking with my counselors, I was able to develop a core educational plan that has specific classes in regards to my career. Being able to have this educational plan has set me on a route to graduate in a timely fashion. Thank you. Counselors are truly helpful in encouraging students. Being able to talk to someone who can help you with your specific career will encourage them to stay in school. For my, for me personally, conversing with a counselor was a critical, important factor in my college experience. Coming into college and having someone to guide me in the right direction towards my career was extremely helpful. Talking my different paths and routes to reach my career has provided clarity towards my future dream of becoming a lawyer. Counselors are truly beneficial towards a successful college experience. Thank you, President Rocha, and the Board of Trustees, for supporting this program and other African-American students. Thank you so much.
Great.
Just cut in for a second. You can see, members of the Board of Trustees, how well-represented we're going to be in Philadelphia. These are PCC's best and brightest. They, they look great, they speak well, they write well, they just show us off so well, and so we're so proud of them. I also did want to give a quick shout-out, as I know you all would, to what I call the elder, Jackie Jacobs, who is really the spiritual. I know it's beating with pride for these students. And the last thing, you know, I'll just pass this around to the trustees, these, these very good students, you know, were, represent PCC to the community all the time. And so, during Martin Luther King Day celebration, which Jackie reported and helped to organize over at the Jackie Robinson Center, these good students and all the other ones from the Ujima program came out, and they were kind enough to let me sit with them for a little bit. So, we took this portrait, and I got it all framed, I'm going to show it to the trustees, and then I'm going to hang it on my wall tomorrow. So, you all come by, and, you know, let me know how you do in Philadelphia, bring back a cheesesteak.
Thank you for your time, everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, and do enjoy Philadelphia. It's certainly very central in the history of this nation, and a beautiful city besides. So, there is a certain college there that one of our members has a great deal of familiarity with, that you might want to take a look at, too. Villas something, what was the name of that college? Villanova, I think is the name of it.
Okay, catch a game.
Sometimes they play basketball, too.
Doesn't it snow there?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, any else, Dr. Rocha?
That's my report, President Thompson.
Okay, we now move on to shared governance representatives. Mr. Miller?
Nothing to report, but I guess I do, I would be remiss if I didn't express my personal appreciation. As the accreditation liaison officer, you learn very quickly that this is not a one-person job to work on accreditation. And my partner in crime here, Crystal, has been very helpful, but more importantly, this college did band together and did work very, very hard for what turned into almost 18-plus month experience. And so, my personal appreciation to everybody for, for the support that the college mustered to get this job done.
Crystal?
With all due respect to you, trustee Thompson, go Peck, go.
Dr. Douglas? No report. Ed?
Nothing at this time, I'll defer it to the college council report.
Ms. Kellogg?
Hi, it's Denise Albright.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, Dr. Dave told me to be quick.
Forgive me, Denise Albright.
That's okay. Dr. Dave asked me to be quick, so the only thing that I have to report for Classified Senate are the appointments that were made. We made three new appointments for the new committees that have been put on, and we're also going to be doing a workshop this year on fundraising for the Classified Leadership Institute that's being held in Ventura this year.
Ms. Hammond?
Just a few things. We've appointed our representatives for all of the college-wide committees that were, that we have as of right now, from facilities to sustainability to enrollment management. And we also created an ad hoc enrollment management input committee with the student representatives that will be sitting on both the enrollment management committee and the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee, as well as students, students-at-large, as we call them, so two representatives that will represent the students-at-large. So, if we have students that are not under the ASPCC umbrella, they can communicate with the representatives as well. So, we have input from all over the campus. And also, we've, we, our vice president of cultural diversity, Ashley Jackson, has started to prepare her event for Black History Month, or Black History Week, that we'll have in, at the end of February and the beginning of March, and she's been working with the Black Student Alliance Club as well, so we're looking to have a very good event for that. And also, I had issued a statement in regards to the proposed enrollment management information, and then I decided to start a blog as well. And so, now, I have a student blog where students can come in and get information and start to post information as well. So, I think you'll hear a lot more about their concerns now that I have that forum.
Great, thank you. Ms. Chapman?
Thank you, nothing this evening.
Mr. Ingledinger?
No report.
Dr. Sugimoto?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, no report.
Mr. Wilcox? Dr. Wilcox?
No report.
Dr. Jacobs?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what was said, thanking Dr. Rocha, President Rocha, and the board for your support of our students.
Dr. Van Pelt? Okay, moving right along here, approval of consent items. There are some that have been withdrawn.
Yes, President Thompson and members of the board, we withdraw from the consent items, the following items, 10S is withdrawn, 26I is withdrawn, 27I is withdrawn, and 30I is withdrawn.
And then 92B is revised, I believe, is that correct? And then 92B is revised, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any other, any consent items that remain on this that people would like to have, uh, addressed separately? Uh, Dr. Mann?
I'd like to make a comment on 77P. And I do not have a copy of 79P in my binder. Is that going to be distributed to us?
Let's see, employee discipline.
But we still are supposed to, at some point, get it, are we not?
Uh, 92P is there. Um, we're looking for... Yeah. Right, no. Uh, I don't see it myself, Lyle, do you?
I don't either. Um, let me see if I can rustle up a copy.
Well, okay, while you look for that, we'll withhold that, any action on 79P until we see whether it's found. Any others to be addressed separately? Doctor, Mr. Martin?
I have a question on 78B.
78?
B as in boy.
Okay.
I don't see 78.
So, you want that dealt separately then, dealt with separately?
We programmatically can handle it however you like, but before we vote on it, I want to ask some questions.
I'm sorry, you said 78P or?
P, you know, I said B, but I'm wrong, it's P. Yes, it's under P. I'm thinking of it as a business item, but I guess it's really a personnel item, so I stand corrected.
Okay, well, let's do 78P as in Paul separately. Uh, any others to be dealt with separately? There is one, um, part of, um, 77P that, um, I'd like to have addressed, and that is that, um, I would certainly entertain a motion that we reject the proposed separation of Mr. Engeldinger.
I already tried.
It's, uh, not effective until July 1st, but still, I mean, that's going to be a huge loss for us, and, uh, so we're certainly regret seeing that on here, so.
Well, I, I very much enjoyed my association with PCC, the greatest community college in, in the United States, if not the world. Uh, I'll really miss being here, but family obligations require that I, that I terminate my employment.
Is there a, uh, motion to approve the remaining consent items other than 79P, which we're, and then 78P also we're dealing with separately?
Some moves. Second.
Okay, any questions, discussion, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Martin, 78P?
78P, uh, is personnel because it deals with a, um, retirement incentive, but my concern is that proper due diligence was exercised in deciding the third-party administrator that is managing the system. So, I just, because the, uh, amount of the award to the company that's getting the third-party administrative contract, when you consider the magnitude of the dollars, is quite substantial. So, I think we ought to, for the record, hear of, um, the due diligence that was done with this firm and maybe the other firms and why this firm was selected. And also, it's based on, uh, this firm is ultimately going to be awarding a substantial amount of money in annuities to, uh, Pacific Life. And I think, uh, similarly, we should know that that was properly vetted and this is the best deal of public funds that we can obtain. So, I'd ask for some background into the due diligence to know these were the right selections.
Yes, well, uh, Trustee Martin, we recommend PARS. Following a thorough comparison of PARS with Keenan and Associates, Keenan is the other major provider of supplemental early retirement incentive plans to California community colleges. We used a, uh, evaluation matrix which included, uh, the experience of the firms, uh, how well they were able to do analysis, um, the plan design provisions, their ability to communicate and educate, uh, the provisions of the plan to employees should we go forward with it, and, uh, their post offerings, administrative and compliance offerings. We, uh, also communicated with other community colleges and, who have offered supplemental employee retirement plans. And, uh, after that rather thorough analysis, which took us the better part of six or seven months, and receiving full, um, recommendations and, uh, statistical analysis and actuarial reviews from, from both entities, we highly recommend PARS as the, uh, early retirement incentive provider going forward. Uh, with regard to the, uh, provider of the annuity, uh, that, that selection is made by, uh, by PARS itself. That's a common, a common, uh, feature of these early retirement plan providers. We do have Dennis Yu here from, he, he's a Senior Vice President of, of PARS. I would say that we, and he certainly can, can address the, the process that they use to select the, uh, uh, annuity underwriter. But I, I might say that Reggie Smith, whom we've been dealing with, was involved in an auto accident today and is unable to be here, so Dennis is, is, uh, is coming his stead. So, he could address, I think, more fully the selection of the, uh, underwriter.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the Board. My name again is Dennis Yu, Senior Vice President with PARS. And, um, with regards to the selection of the insurance company, PARS has utilized the company called Pacific Life Insurance Company for more than fourteen years now, and that is the sole insurance company that is utilized through the PARS trust. Um, we actually do not receive any commissions at all by selecting Pacific Life. We actually have the ability to go out in the marketplace and determine which is the best insurance company to utilize. And we've determined through, you know, rigorous screening, that Pacific Life provides, um, the best, um, financial, uh, stability for the, uh, participants, as well as, you know, the best, um, overall, um, participant, uh, service as well. And they are a very highly rated, um, insurance company. Um, based on the latest ratings, they're rated anywhere from, you know, we see A-plus ratings from AM Best, S&amp;P, Fitch, and we also see a A-1, um, rating from Moody's. So, again, from a financial standpoint, we see that, again, it's a very well-regarded financial company. Um, lastly, is, it is structured as a mutual insurance company, and that's a very important, um, feature for more standpoint. A mutual insurance company is very different from a publicly traded insurance company because at the end of the day, the policy, um, holders of Pacific Life Insurance Company are the de facto owners of the company. So, they basically, the management is, is better incentivized to, you know, meet the needs of the policyholders rather than shareholders. So, again, um, that is a very important distinction, um, and a very important reason why we do use Pacific Life Insurance Company.
Well, I just had one follow-up, because, so if you've used them for fourteen years and we know, uh, life insurance and annuities and these kinds of things have gone through some, um, radical changes recently with life expectancy changes of Americans and whatnot. So, when was the last time your firm did maybe some kind of competitive review or competitive, uh, offering under new life expectancies to firms to know that new clients like PCC are actually getting the best deal we possibly can?
Right, we do, um, um, annual audits of, um, of the various insurance companies out there, but, um, probably, I would say, within about six months ago, we probably performed our most recent, uh, due diligence review with Pacific Life and/or, basically, our management has decided to stick with that firm.
And did the due diligence, in addition to an audit which kind of looks at what has happened, shop Pacific Life against maybe some of the others that are in a similar category of being a mutually owned company?
Right, right. Absolutely, we're always doing, um, reviews on other companies, um, as well, so that, that review does, does take place.
Okay, and, and so it sounds like for fourteen years in a row, somehow Pacific Life has come out ahead, at least in, in your book.
Correct, that, that's correct.
Yeah, I don't know how to, you know, dig it any deeper than that, but I do think there isn't, it's a tremendous amount of money, and we want the best we can do for our people, so...
I understand.
I think there's some level of responsibility to know that every step of the way, people are checking who they have and are comfortable with against the market and what other, against what other new offerings are out there. So, I'd just like to have, I'm, it's helpful to have some assurance that that's going on for our people as we enter into this.
Very good questions, thank you. Other questions? Is there a motion to approve 78P?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we find 79P?
I understand.
Guess we will carry it over to the next meeting.
Yeah, what? Look, uh, I think Mary has some information about that, maybe.
Okay, okay, I came in on the other.
Okay.
Make copies and we can come back to it.
Is it in everybody's folder?
No, it's not.
I, I recommend we continue.
Yeah, we'll just hold that for our next meeting.
I mean, we can go on to another topic and if somebody needs to go, you know, find it in a file someplace and bring it back for the end of the meeting.
We just have, uh, only one copy of it, that's all, so.
Yeah. I, I can make copies right now, let me do that.
Okay, then come get it from, uh, Dr. Rocha.
We can come back to consent items later in the meeting.
Yes, we can certainly handle that. Okay, while we're doing that, let's move on to, uh, progress report, PUSD slash PCC Pathways and Humanity Outreach. Uh, Dr. Rocha?
Thanks, President Thompson. I introduce, uh, Dean Bob Miller, who has, uh, been leading and, uh, provided oversight and supervision to the linkage between, uh, PCC and PUSD. It's a large team for, uh, both, uh, both institutions. So, uh, we wanted to give you a, uh, an update on the, uh, extensive work that we've already done, where we expect it to go, uh, as a prelude to a upcoming, yet to be scheduled, uh, joint board meeting with, uh, PUSD. So, Bob?
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Um, first of all, in front of you is a packet of, uh, material that's got a, a title on it that says, "PCC Pathways," and that's what, uh, myself and others will be speaking to this evening. Um, what I wanted to do is, is, uh, first of all, uh, make the, the point that our activity with PUSD is actually, uh, a model that we are developing, and as this states, partnerships that support PCC and feeder high school districts' joint priorities to create a culture that enhances and expands opportunities to attend college. This effort includes English and math readiness, articulation, science, technology, engineering in math, otherwise known as STEM, and a seamless transition from high school to college using pathways and cohort models. So, in effect, that is our mission, and the work that we're doing with PAS Unified is a model that we will roll out to, uh, and work with other of our feeder districts. And then you'll notice that this supports the Educational Master Plan, uh, Item D, uh, under our critical mission priorities, pathways, in this, in this case specifically K-12, D-1, D-2, .1, .2, .3, and .4. So, that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. And the people who are going to be doing most of the talking are, 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 are deans and our, and, and some of our, our faculty members. So, as you notice here, under the activities, we're going to be talking first about the English Instructional Partnership, Dean Amy Olmer will do that, our English Division Dean, uh, the Math Instructional Partnership, Dean Carl May, I didn't see Carl, yes, Carl, good, thanks. Uh, Dean Dave Douglas, uh, who is going to be talking, excuse me, our PUSD Robotics Program, uh, is going to be discussed by Solomon Davila. Professor Davila, uh, is in our Engineering and Technology Division, uh, Engineering and Graphics, Introduction to Engineering, Mechanical Design, Design Engineering, Computer Rated Manufacturing, and Geometric Dimensions, and Telelearning are his specialties, so we thought we would bring, uh, Professor Davila out to speak to this issue tonight. Uh, and then, uh, Dr. Douglas is going to talk about the College Preparatory Program and the Science Partnership, and then Professor Lori Gallardi, who is, uh, the Director of our Dental Assisting Program and our Dental Hygiene Program, but also has done incredible double-duty work for us in our Office of Career and Technical Education on Articulation, is going to be presenting on that topic. And then finally, uh, Dr. Wilcox is going to be talking about the, uh, PCC Pathway Project. So, that's kind of what we're going to do, we're going to try to get through this relatively quickly and efficiently. And, uh, some of these have got some PowerPoints, some of these are just some handouts. Uh, this first one is a handout that is in the back of your packet, and it's titled, "PCC/PUSD English Instructional Partnership," and I would invite Dean Olmer up to talk about that.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here to bring you up to speed on what the English Division is doing for the PCC/PUSD collaboration. Um, I actually haven't seen the handout you have, it, it didn't come from me, I don't think, so, um... I don't think we have one. Oh, that, I think that's actually from, uh, PUSD.
It was paperclip. It was a paperclip.
This was actually, uh, written by PUSD, but it's got in there stuff about the program. Okay, so, I'm going to refer to my notes here. I want to let you know that the PCC/PUSD English Collaboration began two years ago, so it's not a new program for us. It started in March 2009 with a series of meetings between English faculty at PCC and English faculty from PUSD. We started with, um, nine PCC faculty and thirteen faculty from PUSD from middle schools and high schools, plus assorted administrators at these meetings. The goal of the meetings was to come to an understanding of what the PCC English Program expects of the students who are coming from the high schools and are coming into the transfer-level English 1A. And also, an understanding by PCC faculty of what's happening at the high schools at PUSD and how they are preparing the students to come into our freshman composition program. Uh, we discovered that there were some very obvious disconnects in the preparation and the expectations. So, the outcome of the meetings was an agreement to train PUSD English faculty to teach a senior English class that is a mirror of English 100, which is the PCC prereq, one of the PCC prerequisites for English 1A. The objective is to send students to PCC who are ready for English 1A, who don't have to take any basic skills or remedial classes. The carrot for students who take the classes at PUSD is that they can enroll in English 1A without taking the placement test here. Uh, they have to earn a B in the high school class, and the high school class follows the PCC curriculum. We began training PUSD faculty in spring 2009, and the first courses were offered in spring 2010 by three faculty members of Muir and one teacher at PHS. Each of the teachers taught several senior English classes. Two English faculty from PCC, Nika Hogan and Tuk Tuk Tong Taraj, and I worked with the faculty to create English 100 syllabi for their students that is consistent with the course outlines and the student learning outcomes that we use here at PCC. The, uh, Unified PUSD faculty observed some of our classes, they learned all our new, all our textbooks, and taught their students our curriculum. It's been a challenge for the US, uh, sorry, PUSD faculty and for the district, their district, because they had to order all new textbooks for the students. And, um, what's difficult for us is we're used to our students having the textbooks and writing in them, and their students can't own their books, and so they can't write in them. But they did, uh, take on all of our textbooks. Last year, uh, the English faculty and I reviewed their students' papers with them, with the faculty at PUSD, to ensure that we were all on the same page as for grading. Uh, we will do that again this year, and last year, just by coincidence, and last week, excuse me, by coincidence, three faculty from Muir came to our winter intercession and observed an English 100 class here, which is part of what they do. The project expanded this year with the addition of Marshall High School and two teachers over there, and they are being trained, basically as we, as I speak. They will begin teaching the class in the next few weeks. A letter is being sent to PUSD parents, uh, from me through PUSD, and I have a copy of that letter for you, to let the parents know the opportunity that their children will have by being in this program. At Pasadena High School and Muir, the faculty decided after their first semester to spread the program over two semesters. So, they actually started it in the fall, and it will be a year-long course for their students. Muir is also now backward mapping, and they're going to be looking at the... Muir is also now backward mapping, and they're going to be looking at their 11th grade English classes to better prepare those students to get into the Muir English 100 class at the PUSD, at Muir. I also plan to host a meeting this spring to bring all the PUSD English faculty who are in the program together, so they can share their experiences, and we can plan for next year when PUSD expects Blair to join us, so then we'll have all four high schools. Finally, I want to let you know that PUSD is very excited about this project, and most of the teachers have embraced it, they're enjoying the different curriculum, and they tell me that the students are enjoying the challenge, I hope. Alice Petrosian and Mike Seaton at the district have been extremely helpful and supportive of this program. One of our goals this year at PCC is to keep better track of the students who come from the district to us. The few that we know about who came in the fall did all pass their English 1A classes, so it seems to be working. And the next step, and Dr. Wilcox will address this eventually, is to ensure places for these students in English 1A when they get here. So, thank you very much, and I'll give the letter to you.
Are there questions of Dean Olmer? We're going to ask him now as opposed to waiting till the end. Mr. Martin?
One, wow. Two, they get high school credit for this, is their English?
Yes, it's their senior English, I think it's English 4.
Okay, and probably the question that I'm going to want to ask at the end after we hear it all, so how do we, sounds incredible, how do we spread this to other districts, other schools?
Yes.
Do you want to hold that one for the end? I understand.
Yeah, and indeed, we have a response to that.
Okay.
And just so you know, we did this years ago at Temple City High School. They came to us and asked us to do it, but it kind of went away on their end and I guess on our end, so we would like to spread it, because it's a real benefit to us to have the students come in ready for 1A.
Or at least make sure every district has the opportunity. I'm sure some districts will embrace it more than others, but that's up to them.
I would assume this would be a very effective way of addressing the situation that we face and all community colleges face of having the vast majority of their students who come in need basic training in English.
Right.
And math and writing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have a question?
I have one question. Do we know if there are discrepancies in the other feeder districts, just, or did we only look at PUSD?
Yes, we do know there are discrepancies, and it has to do with the standards set by the state. The high school English classes prepare them to, for reading literature and writing about literature, and we have a nonfiction program, which most community colleges have. So, they come in here and they're, they come here and they're ready to talk about Shakespeare, and we need them to read argumentative essays and talk about issues and write expository prose. That's the big, big disconnect, is that they're being trained for the test and literature. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dean Olmer. I don't know if the dean used the term curriculum mapping, but that's pretty much what we're trying to do here, is map the high school and the college content together. At this point, I would like to introduce Dean Carl Mayne with the math division, and he will talk about the things that are happening between the PUSD faculty and coordinators. There you go.
Good evening. I think it's quite suitable that I follow Dean Olmer, because we've learned a lot from what she's done. We're just getting started on something that she's really gone to town on pretty well. So, what we're doing is rather similar to what they're talking about there. I did my first PowerPoint thing ever for the purpose of this, so I hope it comes off.
We're very impressed, thank you.
Bob told me on Tuesday morning, how about doing this, and how about a PowerPoint. I'll get in there and see what this program looks like. All right, so the objective of this thing is to raise the math rigor levels of PUSD graduates entering PCC. Generally speaking, we find that our new high school students coming to PCC are the new graduates generally placed far below in math where they were in high school. So, this is not just a PUSD or PACC problem, it's probably everywhere. And we also want to ensure that PUSD graduates take math during their senior year. This has been a problem we've noted, awful lot of times, all you have to do to get out of high school is geometry, and so you don't even have to take Algebra II, which would be presumably the equivalent of our Math 131 or intermediate algebra. And so, a lot of students get done with it in their sophomore or junior year, and then they don't bother to take any more math. By the time they get here, their math is frankly rather stale, and they've forgotten an awful lot of what they, so we want to make sure they take math through their senior year and come to us still math warm. And then eventually, we want to get them in here with guaranteed placements and enrollment for successful students. We had two meetings in the fall with the PUSD people, and they were thrilling meetings. We were really excited working with these people, they just, they really turn us on. They're terrific. And we're focusing, we have an initial project, we're going to focus on seniors who successfully completed geometry as a junior. We have classes in place next fall, fall 2011, at the high schools. The first graduates then would arrive here in fall of 2012. PUSD teachers are being recruited right now to teach these courses at the high schools. Right here, I have five, I just heard today, I think maybe we have six now. So, it looks like it's going even better than I thought. And this summer, we expect to provide some training from our instructors to the PCC teachers about expectation, what the course should look like, and that sort of thing. So, the initial project design, junior takes geometry, and hopefully, like I said, what we're objective, make sure they continue to take math through their senior year. What we want them to do, we're designing a course that's pre-algebra slash beginning algebra, kind of a hybrid rigor course, designed by PCC, but it's, when you're done with that, you should be 402 and 125 equivalent. And then when they come here for their first semester, they have guaranteed placement in Math 131 or intermediate algebra. And I see my slide has an algebra way off to the left. Still some more to learn in the program. That's the laptop? I didn't think it was there when I did that, I don't know. So, I should say, when they come here, guaranteed placement. That's presuming, of course, they're successful in this course that we're designing for them in the high school. We have some future things in mind that will come later, probably in future years, but any rate, for example, maybe taking geometry as a sophomore instead of a junior. Then in the junior, you could take this course that we're designing now, that we're expecting seniors to take. And then as senior, you could take Algebra II, and then having done that, you can guarantee placement in intermediate algebra, Math 131. Or, another way of looking at that, another scenario where the sophomore takes geometry, and once again, the junior takes the hybrid rigor course we're designing now. Then in the senior, maybe they go into a new course we would design, intermediate algebra rigor course, would be equivalent to Math 131 here. And if successful in that, then they can come here and have guaranteed placement at the transfer level. Stats, college algebra, B calculus, or whatever their need is, where they're going and what they want to do. Lots to be discussed here in the future. I'm sure this list is only three long, it probably should be a lot longer than this, but we have questions about how we get through this guaranteed role, and how does it really happen, the mechanics thereof? How do we put together cohorts? Will we get enough people for cohorts? And one thing we talked about that would intrigue us a lot, PUSD has a math day they put on every spring. All the students from all the high schools in PUSD come together, and they have math competitions in an interesting time. And we talked about sponsoring that here, getting it on campus. Apparently, some years ago, I don't know how many years ago it was here, and they were really excited about that. We tried to put it together this year, but we were too late for the date they had in mind, we couldn't get the facilities here at the time. But that's a future possibility, it's sort of an outreach along with this academic aspect of it. The participants here, Helen Chan and Madira, Noya, and Amanda Schwartz from PUSD, these people, fantastic. If you notice throughout this, I'm talking about rigor, I use the word rigor a lot. We're hoping that they would get more rigor from their high school experience when they come here, they would meet our standards for mathematics. Now, if you think about this, this might be a little offensive to the high school teachers, you know, well, you don't think we provide enough rigor. So, we were kind of a little sensitive in that first meeting about, you know, how this would go, and they just jumped right on it. They were just totally in agreement right away, we're, oh, okay, now we can really talk, and we really got some good talking going. Here on my faculty, Jessica Valentine is going to be the chairman of this effort, Yoshi Yamato, I'm sure you've heard of in many contexts, is going to be helping out a lot, should be great for the PUSD math day, having been the organizer of Welcome Day and other such grand events. Dr. Chang and Elizabeth Canis, who is a teacher from high school out in the Riverside area. So, we thought her experience would be very good. So, thus far, we've had two meetings in the fall that I've talked about. Five teachers, now I think six were recruited. The teachers are coming here February 7th, next week, for presentation of our initial course design, what we're expecting from them. In spring sometime, we haven't set a date yet, further course development and PC classroom visitations by the PUSD teachers. In summer, training sessions by PCC instructors for the PUSD teachers. So, after the initial planned success, I don't know what the timeframe is here, we have an awful lot to think about, but maybe expanding this to students at other levels, i.e. scenario one and scenario two I just talked about, or maybe even higher than that. We could talk about students who took calculus, we could be moving them up farther. More high schools in the PUSD, and then more districts in our own district area.
Questions?
So, that's not mine.
I kind of missed.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
So, if you could help me understand, this plan is for all high school students, or is there a select group of students, or how are they?
It would be for all high school students who are qualified to get into that course, which means they had done the job, got through the geometry. We're allowing, we're letting PUSD decide how they're going to get students into that, who they would pick, or who they think is eligible. I think the idea eventually would be to any high school student who wants to, probably more a matter of advertising and getting the program going with outreach and making students realize the possibilities.
Okay, so the key is that they would have already have to pass geometry?
Mm-hmm.
And for those students that have not met that?
Well, we have, of course, well, we can talk about, as I said, expanding it to students at other levels. I was thinking more about maybe higher from that point, but we can certainly talk about that as well, below that point. But below Math 131, we only have three course levels, so 125, beginning algebra, and going down 402, pre-algebra. Now, we have our lowest, our new lowest course, the numerical foundations course.
The only reason I'm asking is because the students that we're trying to help with the basic skills, they wouldn't, I can assure you, they haven't passed geometry. So, we'll still have them coming, and we're not being able to do anything for them.
Well, we might expand this down to lower levels, but.
Okay.
Can't go much lower, because there isn't that much below that point.
Below what?
I mean, if students, we could design a 402, pre-algebra course, I suppose, and then if they pass that successfully, of course, it meets our rigor, then they would be getting into Math 125, such things, future projects.
I think one way to look at it, though, is that the students who are taking these courses in high school are coming to you much better prepared than they would be if they were not taking those courses.
Right, that's, that's the purpose, to get them into Math 131 at this point, much earlier, probably would have gotten there.
You would get them, and they would then need the basic skills for any of that.
I suspect without this program, many of those very same students would probably place 125 or below, they might have placed a 402 or 450.
Dr. Mann?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. I, being a former English professor, I completely understood what Dean Olmer was talking about when she said, "High school teaches literature and students how to analyze and write about literature, we teach nonfiction and critical thinking." But is there anything, any kind of a disconnect like that in math? I mean, isn't geometry, kind of geometry, however, I mean, is preparing to pass the case exam in math, is that preparing to do what you would do in the college level?
I'm not knowledgeable enough about that, per se, to say, but I think probably not. We did have some discussion in those two meetings we talked about, and about, what do I want to say? As Amy talked about, the state standards for the high school are not necessarily the same as ours. They do things, just for one example I'm aware of, in pre-algebra, they teach them how to add fractions, terrific. And then they get into algebra, and they do equations without any fractions in them, because they think, I guess they think, well, you covered that back in pre-algebra, so done with that. And then they don't continue with that concept further and further up. So, you get into intermediate algebra, and there's an equation without fractions in it, and you've lost track of your fractions altogether. Whereas, we mix it all the way through, keep it moving.
That is, thank you very much, that's really very important. The other thing that I, I think is extremely important, and you have it there, is to make sure they take some kind of math in their, in their senior year, because I know that if, the farther, the farther you are from math, even in months, the difference it makes on, I went to a very poor high school and didn't take college algebra till I was a senior, and three months, three weeks later, I took the college placement exams and placed very, very high, much higher than I should have, but it got me out of everything. So, I always say, people, make sure you take, you know, the top math as a senior.
One thought I had in response to Ms. Brown's question, Math 131, our intermediate algebra, is the one that we offer by far the most classes of. So, it's really addressing the largest part of our pre-college population. So, it's a good place to start.
Okay.
And we have tremendous demand for that.
Mr. Beck?
This is not a question so much as a comment, but I'm just hearing this, I'm really thrilled to see that PCC is going in this direction. It occurred to me after hearing what's going on in English and then in math, if we take scenario one from math where the first semester student is guaranteed placement in Math 131, and then also a student is entering in English 1A, for some majors, that could be their prerequisites for math and English done in one year, which is fantastic for PCC in terms of efficiency and also the effectiveness of continuing that education from high school. So, I just wanted to point that out, that if or when we're successfully able to execute this plan, I think we're going to see a lot more success with transfer in a much shorter amount of time.
Other comments or questions? Great, thank you very, very much. Very impressive.
Okay, now I'd like to bring up Professor Davila to talk about pathways project relative to robotics out of our engineering and technology area.
Good evening, board. I guess I should speak over here. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Miller for giving me this opportunity to work with PUSD. He brought this to my attention via a meeting with, I believe, the Pasadena Educational Foundation, which is actually spearheading this initiative with PUSD. They've implemented a very thorough process to try to implement robotics in their middle school. So, right now, over throughout all their middle schools, they have over 400 students at the middle school, so these are seventh and eighth graders, dealing with LEGO robotics, which is a very interesting kit for them to be introduced to. And the idea in this middle school program is for them to be able to get introduced to plain and simple robotics, electromechanical components, a little bit of mechanisms, how to connect batteries together, including a little bit of design work, to have usually a little obstacle course that they need to design some robot in, to produce some sort of effect. So, those three things are eventually tricked onto what's called robotics. And so, when the gentleman, Eric Dreyer, from the Pasadena Educational Foundation came to, well, Bob connected me to him, we found an opportunity to actually fill in the middle, which would be the high school. So, in other words, we have PCC out here with different career paths for them to actually choose from. We have the middle school, which has already been established, and we're in the middle of actually working towards establishing a high school so that we can start building articulated pathways into PCC. So, what I took was essentially the essence of their middle school program and what they're focusing on, and sort of showed a way for them, we can start developing different pathways into our different disciplines here at PCC, whether it be through career technical educational certificates, or whether it be through a transfer program of an engineering program. So, for example, you can see here, programming can go into computer science or computer language programming, electromechanical design could go into electronics, eventually solid panel technology or engineering design, which is the program that I teach primarily, or just plain and simple design work where they're actually doing just problem solving in group activities, which is geared towards engineering, architecture, that ability to be able to think on your feet and be able to solve things spatially and reasoning through that. So, I think that's where I'm going to try to work with Mr. Dreyer to establish these pathways through this foundation work that he's doing, to try to make sure the students see a path here, from what they're doing, literally from the middle school, 400 middle school children. And I wanted to take it a step further with, with this particular pathway, not just making sure that we have the right courses out here for the students, but I wanted to make sure that as students articulate through high school, middle school to high school, see the PCC pathway programs that we have here, bring them in since the high school, work with them, making sure they, they obtain a certificate or degree, transfer to a foreign institution if that's their, their wish, from our programs here. But I wanted my students here and any other students that work at ECT capacity here in ENT, to actually give back to the high school somehow through a service learning opportunity. So, in other words, we maybe host a competition of the robotics here on campus, or possibly we actually manufacture, we produce artifacts for the robots, maybe mass produce a whole bunch of chassis for them to use one year with our equipment that we have here. Or possibly, we have our students actually mentor their students, so to make sure that we. we have our students actually mentor their students so to make sure that we represent PCC literally at the high school and at the middle schools so that the students at that age could actually see, "Oh, well, a PCC student helped me out and I know that I can go here from there." And so that's part of what I wanted to make sure that we fit back into that system and help them with, with that articulated program. So it really just started off, I've had several conversations with, with Mr. Dreyer. He's, like I mentioned, establishing the high school curriculum at the moment. He's invited, he has invited me to attend later on this month to their first session to establish the, the robotics and the engineering, excuse me, the robotics curriculum in the high school level. And pretty soon, we hopefully will host them over here so that we can start creating these articulated pathways within engineering and RCT programs.
Great.
Thank you.
Sounds fabulous, really. Thank you very, very much. Any other questions?
Bravo.
One, one thing I'd point out that Solomon is doing, this work is, goes to the heart of expanding opportunities for what we call STEM Mesa. That is, you know, the link from linking what's going on in the middle schools, creating a high school curriculum to PCC, and, and that pathway is key to increasing the number of minority students who are going into STEM fields. So, you know, it's, it's a really unique opportunity and we're grateful for, to Solomon for his work for, on it.
Good, thank you very, very much.
So I think everybody can see that the one common denominator here is our incredible faculty, as the deans have pointed out and presented, and certainly Solomon, we've just got an amazing group of folks here. With that said, I want to introduce Dean Dave Douglas, who is going to talk about a college preparatory program aimed at a science partnership that he's been discussing with our PUSD colleagues.
And it's completely appropriate I be preceded by my esteemed colleagues, Dean Zolmer and, and Dean Main and of course Solomon, partly because what we've learned is that students are successful in science when they have the English and math skills available. And so a big part of our challenge in getting PUSD students or high school students in general ready to take science classes are those two things. And so they are, they've done much of the heavy lifting in terms of getting, getting students ready. We have had a longstanding relationship with PUSD and it's sort of representative of that is March 5th, we'll be hosting, I believe it's our 13th Girls' Science Day on campus. We'll have about 200 middle school girls from PUSD on campus to experience about somewhere between 18 and 20 different workshops put on by our faculty and staff, completely voluntary basis, the faculty and staff come in and do this. And the students volunteer their time, the Association of University Women volunteer their time to usher these students around. So it's a fabulous event, I invite you guys all to come to it. We're also working on hosting the PUSD Science Fair, District Wide Science Fair, towards the end of the month. We've been bouncing back and forth, deciding whether to try and host it on the main campus or CEC, but we're working on that as well. So both of those are sort of longstanding relationships that we had. And you really can begin to build this connection with science and students in the middle school. And so we think it's important to drill down at least that deep. In terms of activities related more directly to the, to the articulation and curriculum alignment and so on, we had a fabulous meeting with Helen Chan, the Professional Development Director for PUSD, and Eric Dreyer, who you just heard about, is in charge of the robotics program. Shortly before Christmas, we got in my office, we closed the door, we said, "There's no suits, tell me what you need." And one of the things that became clear is that we needed to have a discussion with the, we're concentrating on Muir High School, we're going to have a discussion with the science teachers at Muir to find out what really are their needs in understanding how to prepare their students to come science-ready to PCC. So we're beginning to do that, we're going to meet with Tim Sipple at the end of the week to arrange a meeting between us and the Muir science faculty. So I think that's a first step in finding out what those needs are. On a parallel track, we have just finished offering, we taught a class on the Muir campus this fall, and it had significantly challenges, not the least of which is the fact that their fall semester crosses over Christmas and our fall semester doesn't. But among other things, we met those challenges and we just finished up teaching that class. From what I hear, it was a great success. It was really, again, the faculty that made it happen because they were able to be flexible enough to accommodate the, you know, Monday and Thursday and every other Wednesday and Tuesday of the full moon schedule that the Muir campus seems to have. But we worked out all those things and it was a big success. The ultimate go and goal in that, of course, is for a Muir science class to fully articulate with the Pasadena City College Science Class. So ideally, our semester class that, for example, the one we taught, Introduction to Environmental Science, would be offered as a one-year class on the Muir campus, taught by a Muir faculty, and would fully articulate with our class, so that would count as a PCC college class. That's, that's one of the main, main things we're looking at. We are in the, in the early stages of developing some of this curriculum alignment, and as I said, the biggest challenge is, is English and math. We sort of laid out on our table what our, our dream student coming from PCC would be. We're going to do some more research to find out what it is that, what kind of help the PUSD science faculty need from us. And I think we're looking at this with a little bit broader vision to perhaps with the help of SASE funds or some other direction, create a mini-conference of PCC, science faculty, and all science staff, faculty from all high schools in the district to come on campus, sit down, begin the conversation, and really find out what the needs are. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of the science articulation.
Questions of Dr. Douglas?
I'd just like to say before, you can leave, that Dr. Mann, 12 years ago, started, came to us and asked us to start the, the Girls' Day, and you'll be pleased to know that we've carried it on and you've been there most of the time.
Yes, I'm, I'm very pleased. And it was actually initiated by Dr. Susan Cain, who I think was on the school board at that time, who was a researcher at City of Hope. And so she came to me and said, "How about do it?" And I said, "Well, we'll just go talk to Jackie." And that, that was all it took. Thank you.
Kay?
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite up Dr. Lori Galardi, who, as I mentioned, is the Director of our Dental Assisting and Dental Hygiene Program, but she's also a member of the National Accrediting Commission. So we have someone who shares her wisdom and her ability with the nation in terms of dental assisting programs. And so Dr. Galardi is going to talk about CTE articulation and other activities.
Good evening and thank you for inviting me to speak on behalf of the Career Pathways and High School Articulations. And those are also part of what we call our Tech Prep Activities. So you have a little handout that says Tech Prep Activities. And the Tech Prep Activities are also part of the Career and Technical Education Office. So just to kind of give you a little bit of overview of what Tech Prep is, Tech Prep is basically a partnership with secondary, post-secondary, and at least one business partner. Each institution can submit an RFA for Tech Prep Funds, and then based on the state guidelines, each institution is awarded the Tech Prep Funds to use. So Tech Prep is further defined as a program of study that includes two years of secondary education and two years of post-secondary education. And that program of study then integrates the academic career technical education. It utilizes work-based and worksite learning. It provides for technical preparation in a career field that can lead to a technical skill proficiency certificate or a degree in that specific field. So a big part of Tech Prep is our articulation process, and that's whereby the local high schools and PCC have a written agreement, basically that the student will receive college credit for a course taken in the high school. And then that basically leads to the program of study with a non-duplicative, duplicative sequence of courses. So a big thanks to the board for last year making the decision and passing the board policy for the articulation of high school courses because we now have a seamless process for those students to actually get credit for various courses in the career pathway that they took at the high school level. So when they come now to PCC, they already have units of credit that they have towards their program of study, so that's been really successful. The articulated course information is also printed in our college catalog, so we also have the information posted on our Tech Prep website. So all the college counselors, parent, anybody interested could easily download that information or look to see which course of studies match up with which courses at the high school A list of our articulated courses are included in this handout towards the very back, and we are also uploading on to the statewide Career Pathways website. So again, that information is very visible to anybody that's interested, especially a student that may be up in Northern California that's now transitioned down to Southern California. If they took a particular course in engineering or art, it would transfer here as well. Each tech partnership, each Tech Prep partnership also has an advisory committee that meets three times a year. It's made up of faculty, deans, industry partners, high school representatives, and ROP. Due to the limitations of funding that we get for the state, we also rely on other funding sources to assist our Tech Prep programs. So we work in collaboration with our SB 70 and then our CTE funds as well. So the packet that you have in front of you is basically an overview. I know that Ellen Liggins has come usually once a year in the past and has given you an update on her various activities, which included articulation and career pathways. So you have a narrative of our Tech Prep report that we gave. We give it in a five-year plan, so we're at year three at this point. The pink sheet is our Tech Prep schedule of activities, including activities not only at PUSD but also in the other local school districts that we've been working with and trying to engage our various programs of study out there. You also have kind of our newsletter for articulation agreements, again, highlighting our course of studies that have articulated classes, and all of our high school partners have this particular type of newsletter so they know how the students can get credit as well. And then the last is our 100-plus, I believe, articulated agreements with very, various schools in the PUSD area, or in our area. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any questions of Dr. Gaglardi? Yes?
Thank you, thank you very much, and I really appreciate seeing the outreach on what we said. What would be helpful is also, in addition to seeing the number of articulated courses, what the actual enrollment rate is for these, so we can see, are they, are students taking advantage of these programs at the high school level? And are they subsequently enrolling in PCC? So we can gauge that type of effectiveness of this, these agreements.
And that is an area we've also been working with Brock Klein on and getting some tracking devices. So we, he has a software program that we're going to be using to help us track the students that are going through. He's also going to help us with case managers for students that we've identified in various programs to help track them as well. Some of our programs, like in the particular area that I'm in, we have actual program directors and we monitor our students from beginning till end. Other programs are just various areas and individual classes that make up a certificate, but there may not be a program director associated with those. So those are the students that we need to have a better tracking device to make sure that when they've completed all of their courses, they do submit to get their certificate. So I agree with you 100% and we hope to get that tracking mechanism in and be able to report back to you how many of these students coming from our nearby high schools have actually completed their course of study.
Thank you.
Other questions? Good, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And then just to tack on very quickly, through Ipros Health, MIS, and the TLC, we are working on that data tracking system because it is an area of weakness that we have right now. So the man who's going to pull all this together for us, the one who's going to help us understand how the actual pathway works is Dr. Stu Wilcox. And he has been leading a team that has worked very hard to try to come up with the very specific pathway or the contract between the, the school, the parent, and PCC to get these students in here in a cohort-based model. So he's going to be sharing that with you right now.
Right. Good evening. Little segue here for a second. And you have this handout in your, in your pack here. Minimize this for a second.
It's at the back of this one.
Everybody else's notes up here.
It's on the back of Pathways Programming.
Oh, I, it's on the back.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening. Well, I guess, based on that introduction, am I the crescendo of all of this?
Well, we have one person who's asked from the audience who's asked to speak to us, so we'll have you wrap it up and then we'll invite the audience members to ask their questions or to address us.
I guess from what you've heard so far, you've heard what has been going on and what is going on right now. So I'm sort of the segue into the future of what we're going to start doing and what we're building now. You know, as the students leave Pasadena Unified, they come to us with the expectation that in, they're going to come to a community college and in two years, they're going to have their degree and be able to transfer on. Unfortunately, the reality of the data shows that a vast majority of our students do not transfer or get a degree after two years. It really takes three, four, or even more years to get a degree and be ready to transfer. That's the reality. It's, it's statewide, the same thing happens. You might, you can say, "Well, why does that occur?" Well, there's a lot of reasons why it takes longer than two years to get through a community college. Many students come to us at a basic skill level, so there's more courses they have to take to get up to a college level. So that lengthens the duration. There are some students who shop around, which takes longer. And there's also, the state funding mechanism doesn't enable us to provide as many core courses as students need to get through as expeditiously as possible. Well, the fact that it takes longer to get through to a college degree and to transfer, that's inefficient for use of college resources and it's inefficient use of the student's life. They've got other things to get on to. So you might then go, "So how can we make it a reality that the community college experience becomes a two-year path to get to a degree and to be ready to transfer? How does the college have to change to accomplish that?" And the approach we're taking is basically the college has to take more control of the education on the student. The idea is that we will be recruiting students from Pasadena Unified and offer them a contract, both to the student and the parents. The contract is, if you are eligible for Math 125, Algebra 1, and if you agree to take the specific sequence of courses that we will lay out for you and we will guarantee to provide those, and if you get a C or better in those courses, you will, at the end of two years, have an associate degree and be ready to transfer to University of California or State University. So then you go, "Okay, how do you, how do you do that? What's that look like?" That's the, the real question. What you have here is, basically, it's a spreadsheet or layout of, when you think about it, I said, "The only real criteria is that the person's math skills have to be at least up to an Algebra 1 level." But in terms of English skills, there is, they may be eligible for college-level English. They might be really functioning at one step below, which is our English 100, or they might be functioning two steps below college-level English, which is our English 400, basic skill levels. What you see displayed is essentially the prescribed curriculum that would be part of the contract. This is what we would lay out for the students. So let me kind of walk you through the, the top track. So we have three tracks, English 1A eligible, English 100 eligible, and English 400, which is just off the screen. So let me kind of describe the English 1A eligible track. If the students sign this contract and agree to take these courses, then what we'll do during the summer, after graduating from high school, offer them a, make them take a Counseling 10 class, which builds, that works out their major, gives them success skills, how to study skills, how to make sure they're successful in college. And then their first semester would require, and we would provide sections for them for English 1A, their math, whatever level they are, whether it's Al, Math 125, 131, or college-level math, and a math, and a science class, and their history class. Spring semester, they move on to English 1B if they're planning to go to Cal State LA because there's, or if they're in that kind of a major, or they take a different humanities class. But by following these sequence of classes with electives built in so they can work on an 18-unit major, a student will have completed the CSUI-GETSIE pattern, GE certification pattern, and have the requirements for an associate degree. Now if the student isn't English 1A eligible, coming straight out of high Now, if the student isn't English 1A eligible, coming straight out of high school, but of course, based on what you heard from Amy Olmer, the students that are going through taking English 100 already at high school, that's a track that's going to be able to come straight in immediately. But for those students who aren't eligible for English 100, what we would do is offer them the second track where, you see, they have, they would then have to attend summer school, in essence, to take English 100 at that time. English 130 is a reading class that's recommended to be taken with that at the same time. It helps for greater success in other college classes, as well as the counseling class. By attending that summer, they've then caught up essentially with the other English 1A eligible track, and the two can then join and they can take classes in lockstep together. The other group is the English 400 eligible. Now, if I can find the cursor, there we go. Now, if somebody comes in that's essentially pretty, two steps below college-level English, or English 400, they would have to attend summer school, taking the English 400, starting to make up those skills that strengthen them. Then in the fall semester, they transition right into the English, start the math sequence, and then into spring, they're getting into English 1A, and then beyond that, they've caught up with the other tracks and they can work lockstep together. Part of what laying out this prescribed curriculum means, it doesn't allow for any shopping around, but we get everybody through in two years. It does put English, math, and science, which helps build critical thinking skills, right up front in the curriculum, which helps all of the other courses they take. So that's the basic pattern that, that we're proposing. Now, it was mentioned how working with PUSD is the pilot. They've been kind enough to kind of work with us to help work out all of the details of this, because there are a lot of details behind the scenes that have to be worked on, scheduling issues, assessing the students, and the timing on that. So that's, think of that as phase one of this Pathways project. And that we're starting with seniors in high school. Phase two would begin next year where we would do two things. We would, one, then take the Pasadena Unified group, which is this first year working with the seniors, push it down to doing assessment at the junior level. So we could then find out math and English skills for PUSD students at junior level, giving them a year to make up any deficiencies during their senior year before they move on to the college. At that same time, we would then offer it out to all of the other K-12 districts within our community college district with their seniors and start bringing them along. Phase three, we'd then think, third year out, push this assessment back down to the 10th grade and start assessing math and English skills at the 10th grade, to give them two years to start working out any deficiencies to get them ready to move on to the college when they graduate. And during that third phase is when we work with the other K-12 districts within our community college district to see if they want to push this idea down to the 11th grade, giving them a year to make up any deficiencies. So in a nutshell, that's kind of how it all lays out, that we basically take more control of the curriculum, sign a contract with students and parents that if they agree to take the courses that we will lay out and pass the classes, we will provide those courses in a cohort that we've recruited them into. So.
Are there questions of Ms. Brown?
I have a question.
Sure.
So how many weeks of summer school is this?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
How many weeks of, I'm sorry. How many weeks of summer school are we talking about?
Well, they can do this however long they schedule a class. Typically, there's a six-week classes that are scheduled, although they don't have to be. The summer period is long enough that you can accommodate classes that are much longer in length.
I was just seeing that it's a pretty, it's, it's a good start, but I also realize that summer is not the best setting to make up classes. And eight units in the summer for a student that is probably already borderline, I'm not sure how well that's going to work, but this is a good, good way to start a student with a contract, and hopefully won't have to go to summer school.
And part, and again, to emphasize, while we're not limited to six-week class, we have 10 weeks or even under some other alternative schedule, 15. Oh. Oh, sorry.
The English dean is around.
I snuck in because I wanted to respond to the first summer session with the English, because that's, I think, what you're looking at.
Yes.
That's a, a basic skills English class with a basic skills reading class.
Right.
And so the two of them work really well together. The English 902 is just the writing center, it's a co-requisite, it's a third of a unit, it's a supplement to the English 400. And then in the counseling 10, they'll be learning how to be college students. So I agree with you that you have to be very careful what you give, especially basic skills students in the summer, but we, I'm on this committee. And so we, we looked at that because it's a really good way to get them ready for their reading and basic writing skills to move them along. So I think in a six-week program in a cohort, it, it would work.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Jeff?
I, I just have a question. This, this looks like a good plan. What, my question is, can we deliver to the students? If we get the students to adopt this pathway, can we deliver the accessibility to the courses they need to actually complete this?
There actually is. Part of what enables us to work is by this being a specifically defined cohort, that the laws allow us then to essentially create sections or schedule sections specifically for these cohorts. So we can actually guarantee that we can deliver it. There is an upper limit on how many students could be taken in, which is a function of how many total sections we offer of a particular course. Essentially, the law would say that we can offer, say we offered 100 course, sections of English 1A, the law would allow us to have 49 of those to be reserved for cohorts. And you start thinking 25 people times 49 sections, that's a lot of people.
Okay, so then do we, if we create it for this cohort, are we bumping other students out of access as a result?
Yeah.
I would say it's more like a shuffling them around. If the students are coming here anyway, rather than turned loose to do their best at hunting and trying to find courses, we're clustering them together and say, we can guarantee, we can lockstep you through if you will join this cohort and essentially give up that freedom of hunting and choosing.
Dr. May?
Yes, I, and I think there's a lot, just being in a cohort and going through as a group, we saw that with the Ujima students. And I don't, you know, they probably didn't know it, but part of the reasons they're so successful is they're here together and they're taking all their classes together.
It's really forming a learning community.
It's a learning community, yes.
Before we move too much further, let me call upon Cameron White, who was asked to speak to us on this topic, representing Associated Students, he's the Vice President of our Academic Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Rocha, members of the board. I just wanted to commend Bob and everybody that worked on the Pathways program for the, the very necessary work that, and faculties and facilities that this will provide. One of the things that I've been working on, and Dr. Jacobs, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Rocha are aware of, is a mentorship program that falls right in line with the Pathways program, and that will allow PCC students to mentor high school students within our district, to also provide the camaraderie with students at PCC, so that they also have that when they come on campus. Because as Harvard University just released, some of their research data just came out this week, that said that the US education system, both at the K-12 and at the college level, is, is weak, and they need to, we need to model it more after the European system. And that's what this, this pathway system essentially does, is it models that, it exposes students to what they need to be exposed to, it gives them ideas about what they want to do, so once they leave the high school level and they articulate into the college, they have a better direction. And so I, I just wanted to, again, commend them and let you guys know that there's also that mentorship program that's in the works that the Associated Students are working on, so, thank you.
Good, well, thank you very, very much. Other comments or questions, Mr. Miller?
Just to wrap this up very quickly, again, one of the very exciting things about this has been the, the very, very high level of engagement by our faculty and our, our deans and others, our staff, in, in pulling this together. This really is the future of where we have to go as an institution. Dr. Wilcox mentioned this notion of learning communities, Dean Olmer mentioned the other activities, but we're also engaged in a lot of activity from a supplemental instruction point of view, a modularized instruction point of view. We have lots of faculty and others working hard on coming up with ways to support, you know, to, to underpin the courses that exist here. So we're, we're definitely heading in the right direction, and it's, it's really a pleasure to work with everybody doing that.
Dr. Rocha?
I'm sorry. I had one more quick question, to Dr. Stewart. At what point do we request a contract with the parent and student? Is it like 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade? What grade?
That's going to vary depending which, when I describe different phases. As we're starting off, it's going to, we're looking at this spring to the seniors, to work with PUSD, to call a meeting and present the idea to the seniors. Then in a year, as we go to phase two, we'll want to start talking to the juniors, the 11th grade, and offering them this contract. And then the year after that, offering it to the 10th grade. So it, it varies with the year.
And once you offer it to the 10th grade, is that where it would be your deadline? Or, I'm just kind of trying to figure this out.
Conceiv, that's, that has to be worked out with PUSD. Conceivably, it could go down to the 9th grade if they're, you know, game to go with this, and.
Okay, thank you.
Just quickly, just to kind of set out the concept, one thing that some of the trustees, Trustee Wa and, and Trustee May gave the report at CCLC. If you recall, at CCLC last week, one of the key concepts was enrollment priority. PCC is way out in front. What you just saw was how enrollment priority is a reality, okay? This is actually a plan for enrollment priority. But I also want to make clear that enrollment priority, the concept behind this is to, is student success and access. You know, in some ways, PCC is exceptional, because a lot of community colleges, everything that you just heard is going to get cut out, because it's not community college, it's working with the high schools, okay? Now, we're not doing it just because of a moral claim, although that's there, but we're doing it for our EdMaster Plan of Student Success, and we're also doing it because this is the most efficient use of our resources, that the more prepared students we can bring here, the better. Trustee Baum and, and Trustee Brown, you, you raised these issues of, well, we do have a lot of work to do in order to make sure that every, you know, that our goal is every in-district student has the opportunity for guaranteed enrollment. So this will make that a reality. But I should also say, what happens to the other students? What happens to them now is they have almost no chance for success. Students who, who come here without going through this program will hit a wall and they bounce off, because the stats in the EMP show that, in, in math, for example, that very, very few students ever get through the basic skill sequence. So in some senses, it's, for the student, we, it's this, or you're not going to make it. And that's one of the things, you know, we're, we're trying to conceptualize with PUSD. We'll be having a, a joint meeting. We wanted to prepare this in detail, because at, at the joint meeting, we'll be formalizing the agreements here, but I'm very, very proud of the work that staff has done and the faculty have done, because we are way out in front of, in terms of inventing a way to make that in-district goal a reality. And then finally, to tie back to Trustee Martin's question, from the very beginning, this was seen as a, an out-of-the-suitcase package, a model that we could take and transport and import to El Monte, Rosemead, and the other district high schools, San Marino, and so on. And in fact, as, as you know, we have meetings scheduled with the superintendents and the, and the staff. So we're using PUSD as our kind of, you know, yeah, guinea pigs, you call it that, and, and we have meetings scheduled with, with the others to, you know, to, to lay the model out, so that we can offer it to all district colleges.
Anything else on this topic, Ms. Hammond?
I just had a, a couple of questions or, or comments. First, I'm, I'm very excited to see that we've, we're developing some kind of program that will help to get students out of here sooner. I'm just, but I'm looking at the total units that each student would be required to take. Anywhere, it's looking from, in the fall and spring semesters, anywhere from 15 to 18 units. And my only concern is, is that if they're being expected to have this kind of load, particularly for basic skills stu, skills students that could easily be discouraged if they take a, a higher amount of, of units and then they don't do as well because they have so many units, or with any of the students that we have in these cohorts, they may have jobs, or they may have other, other activities that they will have to be responsible for. And so my only concern is that this may be more of a hindrance than something that would support them, and so I want to make sure that there would be some kind of support or some kind of services to ensure that they'll have that success.
Good, good, good point. Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'd like to just thank Mr. Miller, thank Dean Olmer, Dean Mayne, Professor Davila, Dean Douglas, Professor, Dr. Gagliardi, and Dr. Wilcox for a very, very exciting and informative presentation. And part of the topic of this agenda item is community outreach. And certainly by the televising of this program, one small step to make the community a little bit aware of what we have to offer and what we're trying to do to reach out and, and address the very, very serious educational needs that we have in this nation. So thank you all for an excellent job and for a very good presentation, so. Let's come back, if we can, to consent item 79P. I think we now have the material to distribute with respect to that.
While that's going around, just to follow up on Jamie's comment, there is a sense among many college people today that what we used to consider two years is two and a half years. And there, and I'm hearing a strong argument that I'm hearing in the community that, you know, you, you're going to experiment with this, it's a work in progress, but I think her point is really well taken, that, you know, maybe the promise is two, two years in a semester, and you're out, and you ratchet those down to four solids of whack instead of five. That might be where this ends up, because I think what she said is what I hear from many other college people. That's the norm these days, you know, it just takes a little longer.
Okay, we, we now have consent item 79P. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion, advisory vote?
Aye.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Let's then move back to item aye on the agenda, the College Council report.
I think we had H.
Oh, H, I'm sorry. I overlooked H.
I mean, Vice President Van Pelt is going to go quickly, but he can't quite go that quickly.
Move to authorize transmission of the report?
Second.
Okay. Give us a quick presentation of the.
The report, the financial report that, that needs to be transmitted, the 311-Q. You'll notice that there are some fluctuations. We tend to get significant amount of apportioned money during the middle portion of the year, during the second quarter. And then what you're going to see is a deterioration of those numbers through the third quarter and the fourth quarter. There is nothing that is unusual in the, in the report, however.
Are there any questions of Dr. Van Pelt? Discussion, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And if I can just do, just a very brief budget update?
Okay, yes.
What the, they're, they're expecting in terms of the budget process is what they're calling a six-week sprint, where they're expecting the budget to be adopted within six weeks from now. There is a strong advocacy program in Sacramento. What they're reporting is that Dr. Scott is getting traction in terms of workload reduction and the census proposal. And what he's, he's getting traction on is that there will be unintended consequences if there's a change to the, to the way that apportionment is given out with regard to the census. So what, what they would project is that the math completion rates, which are relatively low, would be. would be, districts would offer fewer of those programs in favor of more programs that have a higher rate of success and higher completion rates. It also discourages CTE programs because very often, students within those programs find jobs and move out. But what it would encourage colleges to do is to avoid those programs in favor of high completion rate programs. So they're expecting that, that that will not go through. There's also some interest in raising student fees past the $40 mark. And there's concern among, particularly in this case, the Senate Committee, that that would happen. And what they're strongly advocating for is to offer districts flexibility so that locally, those decisions can be made rather than having them made centrally in Sacramento.
Any questions or any other comments? Okay, thank you. Now let's move on to Item I, College Council Report.
Great. Here in, moving on with the College Council Report, I asked Bob to introduce it. But I would ask us to truncate the, you know, the theory and practice and go straight to just the brief report of the, you know, the three major committees, which are, it's brief enough. We wanted to give the trustees an idea of the recommendations that are being worked on right now by the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee, the Enrollment Management Committee, and the Academic Calendar Committee. So if we can, you know, cut pretty quickly to those three.
I'll just let, let the board know that in your packet labeled College Council Report, you'll see very quickly that what we're going to be running through here in terms of the people who are going to be presenting on the, on the three major topics, Items Two, Two, Three, and Four. And then I'll briefly talk about Item Number Five. On the first, if you turn to the next couple of pages, you're going to see the guiding process and principles that now govern our College Council process here on, here at the campus. I will not take the time to go through these, but I think when you have a moment to read them, you will find that they, they do make a great deal of sense. And I'm very happy to see that the college community has supported these five principles very well. The next thing, item, is our strengthening participatory governance, our, if you will, our map, our flow chart of how, as Dr. Rocha called it, how a bill becomes a law here at PCC. But basically, it's how we go about the development of college policy. And very briefly, I'll just mention that if you, if you go to the upper left-hand corner, you can see how the flow of it, an idea comes forward, the method of how that idea is presented, what we call a new preliminary hearing process. And the group of standing committees that you see under the term consultative process, those are now the major standing committees by which every major item of discussion relative to, leading to how we are going to approach the things that we do here at PCC occurs. And each one of those standing committees might establish subcommittees. We boil down roughly 35 or 40 of these into this group. The "we" is a subcommittee that consisted of Ed Martinez, Academic Senate, Gary Potts, our Classified Senate President, Dave Douglas, our Management Association President, Jamie Hammond, who is the Associate Students Representative, and myself. So we sort of helped steer this whole process through. Anyway, you have your consultative process. What's important, if you go back in a preliminary hearing, is the fact that we now establish a very specific timeframe by which action needs to take, needs to take place. One of our challenges in the past, the College Coordinating Council, was the fact that things could go on for endless periods of time because there was not a specific timeframe. So this process now takes care of that. You see the full hearing process. Then, once the full hearing is done, it either is directed to the CAPM, which is our academic, a council on academic and professional matters, which is an academic senate function, or it's recommended to the president, or the College Council decides that the issue is not going to go forward and it stops right there. Then you see the various decision-making cycles. And you'll notice that the Board of Trustees obviously not only has the right to say yes or no, but also has the right to say fix and send it back through the process and take it that way. So we now feel that we have a very, very good process in hand. People are happy with it. It will be reviewed at the end of the 11, 12 school year, and we will go from there. So with that overview in mind, the, the first item, you'll notice that under the standing committees, we had several committees that were established. And one of those, two of the ones that we established right off the bat because of the situation that all community colleges are in right now was our Budget and Resource Allocation Standing Committee and our Enrollment Management Standing Committee. Dr. Van Pelt is going to say a few words about the Budget and Resource Allocation Committee.
The Budget and Resource Allocation Advisory Committee is chaired by Dr. Keith Oberlander, who happens to have been my math instructor in my sophomore year in college when I was 18 years old. And me. We got together last Friday for the first time and we went through some significant amount of, going through the data. Several people who are here, Ed Martinez, Nolan Pack, Odessa Walker, were among the people who were participants. So what we're doing is we're going through on an interest-based, problem-solving methodology. We have identified what the issues are and the interests of maintaining equity, involvement with the community, supporting the Educational Master Plan, supportive employees, sustainability, technology, and efficiency. So we've gone through the interests, we're developing options. And our next meeting will be next Friday in order to get into this even deeper in, in enrollment management and so forth, so that these become interactive committees.
Questions of Dr. Van Pelt? Mr. Martinez?
Can I just add that that was a very informative session? We went through a very thorough review of the budget. And as Dr. Van Pelt mentioned, we have a faculty co-chair and three faculty members on that committee.
Just to clarify the process, this is the committee that will be doing the hard and the preliminary difficult work of making the recommendations for the adopted Budget 1112, which include the five, the current scenarios that include, start with the 5.3 budget cut. When they complete their work and their recommendations, those recommendations will go to the College Council to be fully consulted, then to me, and then on to you. So just wanted to clarify what that, what the process is in, in plainer English.
A question with respect to that, are they only going to address the one scenario, the 5.3?
No, we're going to get to the 9.3 as well.
And then the real drastic one, 16?
We'll get to that too if we have to.
We're still in denial.
We're still in denial.
Yeah, we're, we'll put them in the witness protection program.
Okay, at this point, Ed Martinez and I are going to talk a little bit about the Enrollment Management Standing Committee. I do want to say that the two co-chairs of that committee are Dr. Patty Lynn. Dr. Lynn could not be with us, she's a member of our business faculty, she cannot be with us tonight. And Dr. Al Godumi, who also could not be with us tonight. So we're going to do our best imitation of Patty and Sabah this evening. In your packet, I'll just briefly remind you, the committee has been established. The two co-chairs, five faculty, three deans, our VP of Instruction, our VP of Learning Services, a Classified Senate Representative, and a Student Rep. So it's a well-represented body. The purpose of the Enrollment Management Standing Committee, and this is the charge, is to advise the College Council on matters relating to course offerings and number of sections provided in accordance with the planning priorities as defined by the Educational Master Plan. One of the operative phrases there is number of sections provided. In the last presentation, we talked about these cohorts. Well, in order to make these cohorts successful, the Enrollment Management Committee is going to have to work with our divisions and Dr. Jacobs to make sure that we have enough sections of the right courses. So this is part of what this group will be meeting. They had their first meeting on January 20th. They, I'm going to go over a little bit of that real quick. They're meeting again on February 8th. They have hit the ground running in a big way because they know the significance of what, what it is. Just boiling it down, their decision-making processes is tied, it's driven by student needs, the Educational Master Plan, and, and our budget realities. Next slide here, the consideration with action to follow. This came right out of the group's notes. They have been talking about the notion of section reductions of 350 to 600 sections to deal with our budget issues. The, they had discussions about the elimination of winter and/or the summer intercessions as something to consider and to think about. Instructional load adjustments for our faculty was discussed. They talked about funding streams that are outside of instructional cuts. And you can see the list of them up there. Looking for foundation support, reduce operational costs, increase our number of international F1 students coming in, et cetera. The, their recommendations were advanced to the College Council at our last College Council meeting, which was a week, a week ago today, I believe it was. And there was a lot of discussion at the College Council. They made recommendations relative to reducing sections, the possibility that the winter intercession might be migrated to the summer session or summer sessions as we move things possibly into the 11, 12 school year. Again, they talked about securing cuts out of, outside of the instructional area and generating additional revenue from our other revenue-generating opportunities through the foundation and our extended learning and other activities. Now, what's really important is this arrow thing at the bottom. The discussion continues at the Enrollment Management Standing Committee, the Budget and Resource Allocation Standing Committee, the Academic Senate, the Faculty Association, and the College Council levels. This group has not come to any, any, any decisions yet. They know they have to relatively soon, but they continue to, to work things through. And Mr. Martinez is going to talk about that.
Right, well, speaking on behalf of Patty Lynn, who could not be here tonight, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, this is a significant discussion. This is moving at a rather fast, fast pace. And because we are not in session, not the, the, the fall or spring sessions, the Academic Senate is not meeting right now. So what we have done is we have sent an email to all faculty members, full-time and part-time, asking for their input on the proposal that was put forward by the Enrollment Management Committee. So we are currently seeking input from the faculty, especially in the issue of the winter intercession. And we will be sharing that information with, with faculty, with managers, with the Faculty Association. And we realize that this is going to take some discussion and some work, but we're, we're going at it.
Questions of Bob or Ed?
Yeah, I have a question of Bob. You kept talking about this committee making decisions. I assume you meant they make recommendations.
I'm sorry, yeah, I misspoke, Dr. Mann, it is recommendations. And of course, again, this is a standing committee of the College Council. So their recommendations would go up through the College Council. And then that chart that, to Dr. Rocha.
And then it goes to the president.
Exactly.
The board's the one that makes the decisions.
Absolutely, so my apologies for misspeaking.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure that everyone else understood that.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I see Dr. Wilcox standing in the wings back there.
Talk about academic calendar because that's a key part of making all this work.
Well, hello again. I'm here because I chair the College's Calendar Committee. And when the Enrollment Management Committee came up with a recommendation that the winter migrate back into summer and move spring up, we saw there's an interaction here with the college calendar. And the College Calendar Committee, we were meeting to work on a calendar for the 2012, 13 year, two years out. And we said, well, wait a minute, let's act proactively on the idea, if the winter session were to move, we decided to figure out what would the dates be for spring to start and end for the year 2011, 12, and for the 2012, 13 year. So we worked those out, and if it were to come to pass that the winter migrates to summer, then spring of 2012 would begin the second week in January and would end the first week of May. Summer would run from early May to late August. And the same pattern worked out also for the 2012, 13 year. So proactively, we figured out what the dates would be if it comes to pass that winter does migrate. I would turn it back to Bob, or is there any questions?
Jeff?
And just, and when you're evaluating calendar for various reasons, are you also taking into account the impact of the calendar on student success? Does it, does a specific calendar arrangement enhance student success? Or, or how does it impact?
I wouldn't, I don't know that I'd say a particular calendar does it. We certainly have student representation on that. And we always certainly discuss about how would this work? We discuss length of summer to make sure that there's more than enough time to schedule whatever is needed. For example, and if the winter were to move, the summer becomes a 15-week period that actually offers a lot more flexibility to schedule courses of varying lengths that, so.
Yeah, I think we, you know, as, as the recommendation has developed, whichever way it goes, that we'll have the information to, the student success information. But I might point out, you know, in terms of the student success, and we were talking about this the other day, and I thought I'd seen Kim. One of the problems with the current winter session in terms of student success is the biggest part of student success is financial aid. And our students come back February 22nd, and the deadline for most financial aid is March 2nd, okay? It is literally impossible for all of the students who will need to get through the system to get through it by March 2nd. If we, not saying we will, but if we decide to recommend that the fall and spring semesters are together in the, you know, more conventional way, it would give staff and students two months to get their financial aid, you know, through and so on and so forth. So that's just one example. And I thought, I saw, I saw Dean Arnwine here. But Dean Arnwine testified that the current winter session from student success is, is a big problem for the fine arts students because they take their courses and then they're in hiatus for two months and they can't run their, their programs or their courses. Same is true for athletics and some other programs. And we're working on finding out, you know, whether, you know, whether that's so for basic skill students.
That's all I was just saying, is that we're evaluating student success as a factor in determining what the best calendar would be.
I think we're good.
Moving back to student access and success.
Dr. Rocha thought that this would be a good opportunity to just give a very, very brief update on the student access, student access and success initiative and the allocations to date based upon the fund that the Board of Trustees put forth and made available. Because it is, it is a function that is beginning to report up through the College Council. So I just wanted to report very briefly on some of the initiatives. The Online Education Initiative, under the direction of Dr. Leslie Terapelli, has, continues to go very, very well in the areas of professional learning, the acquisition of specific software necessary for the, the new online programs that we're putting into effect, and then very specific faculty instructional programs. And you can see the amount of money that has been allocated from the SASI fund for that. Cameron is up here. We were talking earlier about ways to help students from a supplemental instruction point of view. We are, with the, with the use of the SASI monies, we are able to establish a Math Path and Math Jam Lab, a very specific lab facility out of the TLC that will provide the mentorship, the tutor, the extra tutoring, the counseling, the computers, what have you, to help that group continue to be very, very successful. The EMP is just full of things as it relates to professional learning, professional development. So we have set aside the funding in support of the Educational Master, Master Plan priorities that support that. The one person we neglected to mention in the last presentation was Dr. Jacobs and her leadership through all of this, and we appreciate that. One of the things that she has been pushing very hard is the Basic Skills Initiative and the priorities associated with that. And there is a great deal of professional learning that continues to be necessary for our faculty and staff in that regard, so this group will do that. Professional Learning Leadership Team, this is a group of people that have been working with us on this leadership journey for our managers. And they are now working on the development of a plan for faculty and staff going forward. And this, this professional learning program funding is going to help us with that. And then we are building a website for all of our professional development and learning on this campus. So that's what that allocation is for. Dean Maine earlier talked about that Math Curriculum Alignment Project. This is a small sum of money that's going to help fund that project going forward. And perhaps the most... sum of money that's going to help fund that project going forward, and perhaps the most significant thus far is the Student Access and Success Initiative Faculty Innovation Awards, and one of the handouts you have is a RFP that went out to all of our faculty under the, under Ed's signature roughly two weeks ago now, and it is an opportunity to develop, to, to access funding in the area of innovation on the individual level, the cross-disciplinary level, and the division, department, and program level. So at the moment, we're projecting somewhere in the neighborhood of $230,000 that will be allocated to these innovative grants, and when you get a chance to look at this document, you'll see how that system is going to work under the auspices of the Academic Senate and our Institutional Effectiveness Committee, as members are going to be engaged in this process. So we continue to, to, to make good progress moving forward, and, and that's just kind of a brief update and a report.
Are there questions of Mr. Miller? Jeff?
I just wanted to say thanks again for walking us through the College Council process, because it's always good as trustees to be reminded what steps and how many filters a, a proposal gets before it comes to the Board of Trustees. And, and I have a philosophical question, too. The system, the community college system is praised, we talk about it statewide, for its ability to be nimble and respond to different environmental forces and things like that. Does our process allow for the flexibility of the institution, or is this process, how is, or is it, does it make it hard to bring change?
In my opinion, this process is much streamlined, significantly more streamlined from where it was. It is a very flexible process. Under Dr. Roach's leadership, we have moved things very rapidly through, through this, this system. So I do personally believe, and others can speak to it, that there is flexible and nimbleness built into this. Dave was smiling at me, did you want to add anything to that, Dr. Douglas?
Well, I think the real innovation is we set timelines for ourselves.
Exactly.
We have definite deadlines that we set based on the magnitude of the issue going through, and we are so far holding to those deadlines, and I think that's a big...
And we've taken roughly 35 to 40 committees and boiled it down to these 12 or so you see in front of you.
So this is a relative new innovation, this process?
This is, this is a new innovation, something that Dr. Roach, he's really good at scratching on the back of a napkin or up on a whiteboard, and we just chatted about it one day, and then our group came together and we started working on it. It's been through our process, though, but yes, it's, this is, the guts of this have been here, but, but really, it's the timing issue and, and putting a tight timeline on it that has helped quite a bit.
Thank you.
We appreciate the work that's gone into this, it's obviously critically important. Are there questions or comments on this?
No.
I understand that item J is being withdrawn from our agenda, so we're down to future board meeting dates. Thursday, February 17th, a study session at the Jackie Robinson Center, March 2nd, our regular meeting here, closed session beginning at 5:30. And Wednesday, March 16th, study session at the Crow Library in San Marino. Future agenda items, one thing that Jeff has brought to our attention is the redistricting issue, and we probably should put that on an early upcoming agenda and take a look at it, as it affects community colleges.
I have a question.
It is noted.
Ms. Brown?
I have a question, as we move our meetings to different areas, are we going to advertise in local papers so constituents would know that we're there?
Yeah, for example, I think Juan is here, we, for the meeting at the JRC, you know, which of course is part of the Black History Month, we will be doing advertising, and also we, I think we scheduled an ad in the Journal that would announce to the community that we're going to be there, and we'll be doing other outreach to make sure that the community is aware and attends.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll be doing the same in all of the, you know, whether it be Area 5, Area 2, Area 6, you know, and so on.
I would encourage other, representatives of other areas to come up with locations for study sessions in your particular area, so that we can plan as we move ahead, so. Any other future agenda items? Anything else to discuss this evening? Thank you very, very much, everybody, and we are adjourned.